I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting two of the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners at 7:06 PM. It does say June 10th on the agenda, but today is June 11th. So I'll have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God and the visual liberty of justice for all.
Normally, we have people stand for a moment of silence. Tonight, we're going to present a proclamation. So please take your seats.
So the Board of Commissioners is presenting a proclamation. I'm going to go ahead and read it. It says, "Whereas the John C. Clark Senior Stilton American Legion Post 420 is proudly located within Swatara Township, Dauphin County, Pennsylvania, and whereas June 12th marks the anniversary of the Women's Armed Services Integration Act of 1948, a historic milestone that granted women the permanent place in the United States military. And whereas the John C. Clark Senior Stilton American Legion Post 420 currently has 16 dedicated female legionnaires on its 2025 roster, reflecting the strength, commitment, and enduring legacy of women who have served our nation. And whereas, a Female Veterans Day Tribute will be held in honor of the women who served on June 13th, 2025, at 1860 South 19th Street, Harrisburg, the home of the John C. Clark Senior Stilton American Legion Post 420, beginning at 7:00 PM. And whereas, recognizing Women's Armed Services Day in Swatara Township brings a vital awareness to the contributions, sacrifices, and achievements of women in the United States' armed forces, both past and present. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners, Dauphin County, Pennsylvania, do hereby honor and support the women of the John C. Clark Senior Stilton American Legion Post 420 as they commemorate this historic occasion in Swatara Township. Be it further proclaimed that June 12th shall be recognized as Women of American Legion Post 420 Day in Swatara Township in tribute to the outstanding service and enduring legacy of our female veterans."
I believe we have representatives from the American Legion. If you want to come up, we'll present this to you. And then we're going to take a picture or two.
All right. Secretary Savage, could you do roll call, please? Commissioner Tuckey?
Here.
Commissioner Zubak?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Vice President Steele?
Here.
President Ellis?
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And this board did have an executive session this evening to discuss potential litigation. We are now up to item six, promotion and swearing in of Corporal Mick Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could have Judge Smith join me up front, and Officer Mick Snyder. Say officer for the last time, probably.
He still looks 16. He looked 16 when he joined us, and he still looks 16.
Tonight, we have the distinct honor of promoting a very deserving Swatara Township Police Officer. Patrolman Mick Snyder will be promoted to the rank of Corporal and will maintain his assignment in our patrol division. Officer Snyder was hired by the Swatara Township Police Department on January 14th of 2013. He has distinguished himself over his career by serving as a firearms instructor, a high enforcement action team member, a field training officer, and a Dauphin County Crisis Response Team member. He's also been decorated with departmental awards, including the Team Achievement Award, the Award of Merit, the Award of Heroism, and the Life Saving Award. Officer Snyder has proven himself as a leader amongst his peers, and I have full faith and confidence in his abilities. I know that he will bear the weight of this new role with strict adherence to our mission and core values. Congratulations, Mick. Do you have business with the judge, and then I'll get you your plaque?
Are you ready to take yours?
Sir?
I am, Your Honor. You may repeat after me. I am Mick Snyder.
I am Mick Snyder.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I was before, that I was before, obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth, the Constitution of the Commonwealth, and the ordinance of Swatara Township, and the ordinance of Swatara Township. And I will do so to the best of my abilities, and I will do so to the best of my ability, and discharge the duties, and discharge the duty of the office of corporal, of the office of corporal, with fidelity, with fidelity. Congratulations.
Your Honor, you might want to stay there. Okay, we're not done with the pictures. We do that. You can say our hands while we're even started. Congratulations, Commissioner. Okay, so what we're going to do now is, we're going to have the Commissioners come out for a picture, then any family members that, so we're starting with the one you don't want, which is us, then your family, and then any law enforcement that you wanted in the picture. You're in charge. If you don't want somebody in, tell them, no. There'll be a couple of pictures, sir. You're not going anywhere for too many. You're with that? Okay. Family, friends?
Absolutely.
Bring them up. We're going to, we're going to out, let's have maybe a speech.
You going to give a speech?
Right, the DJ dropped it.
Now, anybody that's law enforcement, whether it's fire, anybody else that's here? Oh, if you have family holding out?
Yeah.
Okay, let that be taken.
Good to say. Mine's a news clip.
Good job, bro. Good job. Congratulations. Absolutely. Who's in charge now? You or Brendan?
If you came specifically for that ceremony, you're not obligated to stay. But before the corporal leaves, I want to tell you about one incident that he was involved in. He probably doesn't know I'm going to say this, but the heat team was out on a detail, and that same night, we had an event called Hoops with Heroes. So the police department was out in the community playing basketball with the youth in the community. We had a pretty decent turnout. If I remember, Chief Ryder at the time was cooking that night. And we ended up with probably close to a dozen police officers there. The corporal was in shorts and a t-shirt. And they were playing with students and kids, and everything was real gentle unless another officer was about to shoot or was going to get a rebound. And this gentleman here had, at the time, maybe still, very muscular arms. And the ball was about to land on one of his coworkers, a police officer, and he snatched it and almost decapitated the person, and then looked around to make sure it was an officer. And it was so interesting to watch. And I have a picture of this. I may just post it. But they were making sure they didn't injure the teenagers and some younger kids, but they really weren't worried about each other. They were very competitive. And I will say, this gentleman is very, very athletic, and he's a good basketball player. So I'll end it there. All right. And congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go on to item seven, visitors' requests and comments. Well, we'll give them a moment to clear out.
We can give them a minute.
Yeah. Well, we'll give them a minute or two to clear out, and then we'll.
Get their pictures out front. I hope what in here, congratulations, get out.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to items seven, visitors' requests and comments. If you could come forward, please write your name and address, as well as state it for the record. You may begin your comments.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Loftus. I live at 5631 Plainview Drive, Harrisburg. Okay. Today is Wednesday, June 11, 2025, and up to this moment, I have yet to have a conversation with anyone in Swatara Township who thinks plowing under the Dolphin Highlands Golf Course to make way for an ugly environmentally unfriendly data center is a good idea. No one I talked to throughout this entire township thinks that this is a good idea or should be allowed. And it should not be allowed to devalue property and cause health expenses for our very diverse community. Nobody wants the 24/7 high-frequency noises. Nobody wants to breathe the methane-emitting gases. Nobody wants the sheer ugliness of the development. Data centers take an enormous amount of energy that the equivalent could fuel 15,000 houses. Water consumption is enormous, and it could provide water to 9,000 homes. Which brings us to the question of whether our Swatara Water Treatment Plant can handle the toxic pollutant discharge that will affect the environmentally sensitive Swatara Creek and Sesquahanna River. There's an example, well, there are many examples, but one of the examples in Berkeley County, South Carolina, that data center takes enough electricity to fuel 300,000 homes, and the amount of water it takes would provide water to 9,000 homes. The footprint of the center is the size of 13 football fields, and it emits so much methane gas into the air, it shimmers as the heat escapes it. From my research, there seems to be a pattern of placing these developments in lower-income, diverse neighborhoods. The residents don't even know what happened to their community and their health until after the damage is done. I'm submitting to you some articles for the record. The NAACP is now involved in helping these exploited communities. One of the articles here is called, "How Come I Can't Breathe?" Another article is, "How the Data Center Boom Could Harm Black Communities?" The other article here is entitled, "NAACP Demands the Shutdown of Elon Musk AI Dirty Data Center in Memphis." Lastly, I would like to thank all of the residents who supported Mr. Tuckey and Ms. Zubak in this last primary election. These two Commissioners were principled enough to look out for our health and our well-being and safety of all township residents. And I know that they will always fight against environmental racism such as this with the destructive development and zoning. Thank you. And there are many more articles online. I will submit these for the record.
Thank you. I'll get them scanned, and we can distribute them to everybody. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? Just back a little bit.
President?
No, it needs to be four.
Could you please send this, this copy? I didn't hear that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Claus, 447 Pritchard Court, Chambers Hill. President of the Chambers Hill Fire Company, where I'm a firefighter, an emergency medical technician, and the company president. I really hadn't planned to come up here to talk tonight, but a blizzard of activity on Facebook mentioning our fire company inspired me to do so. I don't go through all the Facebook things. I think it just adds fuel to the fire. So I just thought I would come here and talk to you directly. We had nearly a year of meetings with ourselves and some township officials and two appointed civilians to try to help Chambers Hill Fire Company get stronger. And during that time, the two civilians came up with a performance improvement plan, which was predicated on the fire company getting more volunteers. We all need more volunteers. It's no secret. Not just our fire company in our township and our county and our state, but the whole nation. Everybody has this shortage of volunteers. We put forth a mighty effort trying. We, at one point, thought we had a bunch of people that were willing to come. And we also invited fire companies. When you closed Bressler, we invited the Bressler firefighters. There had been 15 of them at the time you closed them, and now we got, there's two of them back in the township, but that's a loss of 13 firefighters. We tried to get the folks from Pax Tang, who you didn't want to run as Pax Tang, and our plans didn't work. Then we kept meeting and trying other things. And more recently, we measured our building. Our building isn't built typically where you have 50% upstairs and 50% downstairs. So our upstairs takes up 40% of the building. That's the firehouse where the meeting rooms are, and for the firefighters, that is, and the day room and the apparatus. And then our downstairs takes 60% because our social hall sticks out in the back. That's why there's the discrepancy. So the memorandum of understanding written by your attorney on his own without Chambers Hill Fire Company's input was to have the township lease that upstairs and in return pay 40% of our bills. Let me pause here to say how very thankful, not just myself, but the Chambers Hill Fire Company is for the many years of support you have given all the fire companies financially in this township. It has been greatly appreciated, and it's no small thing, and it was a good thing for that many years. But our members had three meetings in which we discussed this. We did not make a decision lightly. We talked about the general principle before the memorandum was presented to us at a fire company members' meeting. We talked about it at the Board of Directors' meeting. And when we got the memorandum, I made copies and distributed them to our Board of Directors, and everybody read them and thought about it. And we came together, and people voted no. The fire company, the board, does not want to do this. Having said that, it doesn't mean we're bad people because we want to keep the control of the upstairs of our firehouse. And we have an empty bay sitting there, very nice and clean. We just power washed it. We even cleaned under the drains, which are kind of icky if you, when you think about it. But it's empty. You don't need to put a fire engine down at the landfill. However it works out between us, it's fine. Thank you. It's fine to have the fire engine in our station. We're decent people. We're good people, and we think that it's okay. We do standbys. We were standing by today. I went on a couple of calls on Monday, and we don't always have calls when we are standing by. And last week, we, myself and my Chambers Hill Fire Company Treasurer, Sarah Garrett, met with Commissioner Connolly, and we discussed the finances. And we also came up with a list of questions that we gave to our financial, your financial director, Brittany. And we asked for answers. And I know it was a lot of paperwork for you to have to do. I know it was research. But we need to do that. We're not quite sure where we stand financially at this point with the Board of Commissioners. I know what Commissioner Connolly wants, but I think that it's probably something not a one Commissioner should decide, and I suggested as much to him. But whatever you do, whatever you do, Chambers Hill Fire Company is here to serve the community. I had two guys take the pump operations class in York County and do well at it last month. We actually had signed them up for a class in Cambria County, Johnstown area, and we were going to pay for it. We had them all registered, and Cambria County said they had to bump them because their courses was first priority for Cambria County people, which I understood. So we couldn't find any volunteer, but we found one in Hallam, York County, and they went three different times, two days, or two nights and one day to do this course, and they both did well at it. I have another firefighter just coming in, a newer guy, who is excited about taking the modules at half that he's required to do. We're here. We're here to help Swatara Township, and we're not going to go away. Our fire company's been here for 71 years. And even though we have, it seems like, a philosophical difference about a few things, don't discount us. We're here to stay. We're here to serve, and we're real good people. I wish you knew the goodness of the fire company. We don't go post things that we do on Facebook, but, you know, last week, we were down at the oncology department at Hershey Medical Center, delivering gifts for the people getting chemotherapy. We do that a couple of times a year. And we do lots of behind-the-scenes things that we don't tell people about that we do. We're here to stay. We're here to serve the community, and I hope you will remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? All right. I don't see anybody jumping up. We're going to go ahead and move on to item eight, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved with the amendment of the date of June 11, 2025.
Do we have any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. We're on to item nine, motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item 10, building and codes plans. We'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Golden.
Hello. So the first item, A, time extension request for the preliminary final land development plan for 4031 Executive Park Drive until September 10, 2025. Staff is recommending approval of the time extension. They need some time to do traffic study and a couple of other things.
I motion for 10A and B together. They're both extension requests for this board.
And essentially, if I'm not wrong, Zach, it extends, and then they'll go back to the
PC and finish up everything they needed to do anyway.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. By way of discussion, could you just do the second one, too?
Sure.
And then let's see if anyone has any questions.
Yep. This is a time extension request for the preliminary land development plan for the Smithland Warehouse Development until August 29, 2025. Staff also recommends approval of this timeline extension. They want some extra time to clean up the plants.
All right. Does anyone have any discussion or questions at this time? And again, the motion is to approve 10A and 10B. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we're up to 10C.
Yes. This is a financial security release for 419 This is a financial security release for 419 High Street. This is for a single-family dwelling. You want me to continue to do the other releases and reductions?
I'll make a motion to approve 10C, D, E, F pending they've met all Swatterer Township requirements.
Sure.
For the release or the reduction.
A motion and a second. So then, yes, if you just give an overview for each item.
Sure. The 3801 Paxton Street and 2020 Paxton Street, they're for Faulkner Auto Dealers, and then the 4655 Lindell Road is for the Chick-fil-A.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or discussion at this time? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So 10C, D, E, and F are approved. And now we're up to G and H.
Sure. So the township has received a zoning map amendment application from 441 McNaughton Properties LLC on May 30, 2025 to rezone Dolphin County Tax Parcel Number 63-062-058, which has no address, from single-family residential RS to limited commercial CL. The Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code does not require governing bodies to act on zoning text or map amendment applications. Therefore, the board of commissioners could simply ignore or deny the request without township or county planning commission's input. If the board of commissioners find it necessary to forward the application, I provided the timeline for that request due to various timeline restrictions, such as council planning commission meeting has 30-day review period, Tri-County has 45 days. We would recommend a board of commissioners' public hearing on August 13, 2025, so we can meet all of our advertising requirements, property postings, et cetera. Staff is recommending forwarding on to the planning commissions for review and setting that public hearing. And also, Mr. McNaughton is here to present the application.
You can come forward.
I guess I have a question for Zach.
Go ahead.
So this does require, with the application, us to make a motion and a second to move it towards the planning commission?
If you so desire, yes.
And then we'll come back at a later date and have, I didn't get a chance to see your timeline yet, but then we'll come back at a later date and hold a public hearing on the matter?
Absolutely. Yep.
All right. I'll make a motion, so we get a discussion while he's here as well. I'll make a motion for item 10G.
Second. So this is part of the discussion?
Yep. To forward to the planning commissions and set the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Hey. Good evening. Name's Joel McNaughton. I'm an attorney with the McNaughton Company, 4400 Deer Path Road, Harrisburg 17110, and also, I think, managing member of 441 McNaughton Properties LLC, which is the owner of the tract in question, 17 acres at the corner of Lindell Road and Keckler Road. Really only want to ask tonight that you approve to forward the application on to the planning commissions. Should that happen, we, you know, we would plan to make presentations at both the county township planning commissions and then ultimately come back here for a public hearing on the matter. But that's the simplest request tonight is just to say yes, forward this on to the planning agencies.
I do have a question. If we forward it on, are we required to have the hearing?
No.
Okay.
You're not required. Am I correct?
Yeah. This would just be authorizing the McNaughton Company to start those conversations. Ultimately, it would require a change to the zoning map, which is entirely within this board's discretion, whether you want to entertain that or not.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or discussion at this time? All right. So we have a motion and a second on the request to forward this to the planning commission.
For clarification purposes, do you want to set the public hearing a while so we can do the necessary advertising? We need to advertise and post the properties as well if we're going to hold a public hearing. Or do you want to wait until?
Yeah. Let them, yeah, the planning commission review it.
Right.
And then go from there.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah. That's certainly fair.
Right. Yes.
Okay. That's all. Wasn't sure. You're just getting closer for next one.
Well, and it's a related application, and that's why I.
You sure? If you want to speak.
If I could just speak on this, because our application would be the next application and we're related. Just want to make it clear. So the, you know, both applications were submitted, Joel can correct me if I'm wrong, both applications were submitted to the township pursuant to the township's, sorry, forms. Sorry.
To the mic.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Just by way of introduction, my name is Ambrose Hines. I'm the attorney for the next applicant, but these applications were submitted at the same time and were related. I just wanted to point out, we had submitted the application according to the township ordinance and township forums and paid the required filing fee, which would, is intended to cover the cost of the hearing. So the, the hope would be to have these go through the process. The hearing can be scheduled in advance. Whether it occurs is certainly up to the, to the board's discretion, but you could always decide to preliminarily schedule it for two months out, August 13, I think you said, Mr. Golden, with the anticipation that as you get through this process, so you would have enough time to do the proper advertising for that as, as it goes through the process. It would be, it would behoove the board to schedule it now with the anticipation of that date. That's, that's all I would ask.
Good.
Yeah. The normal process we have is that it goes through everything and then we schedule it, correct?
I, I don't know. Is that, usually we set the date in advance. Is that what you're saying we normally do?
My experience is setting it in advance, so we have plenty of time to advertise and things, but I don't know how this board has handled it in the past.
Well, I guess I have a question. It would probably be a better process, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, we send this to the PC, let them make their recommendation to us, and then we come back and schedule it, because that's been our normal standard practice, right?
I don't know what this board's practice is.
Yeah, that's.
That's the way I've normally, normally seen it. I mean, I guess my next question is, if that hearing would be scheduled, Steve, are we firm to that, legally bound to that timeline? I mean, what if the PC?
It would require change with advertising.
Right. So, so there's no, the scheduling is just for the hearing on the application. There's no obligation by the board, even on the night of the hearing, to vote on it that night. They could always push it to the next meeting if they want to delay a vote on it to the next meeting. The process really is, it's, it's, it's going to the planning commission. The planning commission is going to review this application and the next application. And then the county is also going to review it. In order to keep things on schedule for a public hearing on the request for the rezoning and to make sure that you have commentary from both planning agencies within the time periods, you know, in advance of that hearing, but not three months in advance of that hearing, it's, it just makes more sense to schedule the hearing for the August date or even September date, but schedule the hearing and then forward it on to the planning commission, give the planning commission an opportunity to review. So if the planning commission is reviewing it in their July meeting, then you're talking, you would get both the planning commission from county planning and the planning commission from the township back well in advance of a hearing in August, and then they have the public hearing before this board and have the commentary from, from both of those agencies in advance of that hearing.
But if I'm looking at this schedule right, Zach, we would, we would still be able to meet that deadline because our meeting's earlier in July. And that, if I'm looking at that right, I mean, we would have time to advertise, even say we're going to have a public hearing.
Does that have to be for 30 days or no?
It has to, we have to give the planning commission, the council's planning commission, 30 days before the public hearing date, and the Tri-County at least 45 days before the public hearing. So he brings up a good point, that you have no obligation to vote that night, but we stop to hold a public hearing.
What I would suggest, if we are going to move forward with scheduling it, that we push it to September, and then that gives ample time. And like you said, we'd hold the hearing and, if we're going to, yeah.
Yeah, but I think even if, even with your date, Madam President, if we come in July, which is the first meeting, will actually be July 2 for us, if we're a September date, we would still be in the timeframe, timeline to schedule that hearing.
Well, yeah. If that's the case, then we might as well just wait at that point, and it's fine. I just, if we were going to, if we were going to push it through or get it on the schedule, it would just be more appropriate to schedule it now. But if, if the board wants to wait, that's fine. We can wait till that July meeting.
The planning commission cannot make a recommendation at their July meeting because they need to see the Tri-County's planning commission comments before.
Right. So in the July meeting, you probably won't have your planning commission comments on this.
Correct.
Right, but we'll be, we'll end up at the same spot where the, the, Madam Chairman wants to set it in September anyway.
Yeah.
So we come back in July, we set the hearing for, you know, September, which is still two months out, two months out, and that still gives everybody the time to comment.
Certain. Yeah.
Is, are commissioners okay with that?
I'm, I'm fine with that, and I'm, I'm the committee chair of this area here. I'll talk with Zach. I'm, I'm kind of a little confused right now, thinking that maybe we could still do the August 13th, but you're saying there's a step in there because, I mean, at some of the recent planning commission meetings, they meet on Tuesday, and I think Tri-County Regional meets the Monday before.
Correct.
So I've been in meetings where they've come in, you know, with, with their comments, and just, just so I'm clear, the, you're saying that they have 45 days?
Before the public hearing, Tri-County has 45 days to review it.
Because it's a map amendment, they technically. No, I get, but that doesn't mean they always take 45 days.
No.
That, that's why I'm, I'm thinking we don't really have a, a conflict here, but I have to agree that, you know, just, just on conversation, setting the, the hearing date before the planning commission actually. That, and that's fine. I just, if, if the board wanted to entertain the hearing, I just wanted to give that option. You know, after the planning commission meeting, which I think is July 1st.
Yeah.
Then, you know, we, Zach can get in touch with you and see if, if you're still available for the 13th, if we can do it. If not. Yeah. Certainly. If, if you notice that the actions before you came up here were actually delaying things that were in the pipeline. So we just had two votes on that at the request of the applicant. So I'm just a little concerned of us, you know, going maybe too fast or stepping too far tonight. That's perfectly fine. I'm just, just wanted to leave it that it was an option for the board if they wanted to do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything further for? The motion was for, was it for both?
I, I mean, we, we obviously discussed both now, so I'll, I'll rescind that motion if Commissioner Conley will rescind his, and I'll just make a motion to approve G and H to move forward. I mean, let's.
I'll rescind and second this.
Send it to the planning commission.
And send it to the planning commission.
Yes.
And then we'll let you give a brief overview, and then you're right there, you'll be able to speak to anything else.
You don't have to stand, Joel. It's up to you.
All right. So we, the township received a zoning map amendment application from Prestigio LLC/900 Keckler Road LP on May 30, 2025 to rezone Dolphin County Tax Parcel Number 63-062-062, which has no address, 63-062-125, which is 5150 Lindell Road, and 63-062-129, 5100 Lindell Road. The applicant is seeking to change the zoning classification of 63-062-061 from agricultural to commercial limited, 5150 Lindell Road from agricultural to commercial limited, and 5100 Lindell Road from A to agricultural, this is A, to medium density residential. Again, you're not required to act on this matter if you do not wish. One thing to note in particular, that if Mr. McNaughton's application is denied or not acted on, this one in particular would have to be denied as well as it serves as a connection point for the CL. The RM could be approved as it is continuous to other RM districts, but however, this would have to be denied down here. It is important to note as well that Navarro, Mr. Navarro does not own all the land that's going to, that he's requesting to be rezoned. There's a parcel in the middle who, in my opinion, staff's opinion, that they should contact the resident and make sure that they're aware that their property would potentially be rezoned. We would be required to post their property, however, it's probably important and ethical to contact them. And that's my, my presentation.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Again, thank you, Ambrose Hines from Stevenson Lee on behalf of the applicant Prestigio LLC and 900 Keckler Road LP. Mr. Navarro is here. He's the principal of both entities that, that controls these properties. And just very quickly, as Mr., uh, sorry.
Golden.
Golden. I apologize. Explained, its three properties would be rezoned by this. There's two directly along Lindell Road, directly adjacent to Mr. McNaughton's property that would be going from A to CL, similar to Mr. McNaughton's property. And then the property to the rear, which is adjacent to another property that is owned by my applicant, the applicant, would go from RM, sorry, from A to RM, which is consistent with the neighboring property that is owned by 900 Keckler Road LP. So with respect to the intervening property that was included in this application, Mr. Navarro has reached out, the applicant, oh, I'm sorry, the owner of that property is aware that this application has been filed, and we've been in communication with her. So as to that point, we, we have been in communication with that owner.
All right. Does anyone have any question or discuss, discussion at this time? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So the motion to forward both of those applications to the planning commission is approved. All right. We're up to our reports for the evening. We're at 11A Treasurers' Report.
This is for the month ending May 2025, and I apologize in advance for not displaying it on the screen because there is no screen, but it will be on the website. The beginning balance is $25,280,435.31. We received $2,904,533.87. We dispersed $3,149,491.89 with an ending balance at the end of May, $25,35,477.29.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Then I'll make a motion that we accept the Treasurers' Report.
Second.
All right. Do we have any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're up to a solicitor's report.
No report from me this evening.
Thank you. All right. Fire Services and EMS Report. Do you have? It was submitted to the board in advance, and we'll, we'll get it.
I could just touch on a couple sentences.
Okay.
It's the May 2025 summary report. Fire rescue responded 227 calls for service. Six of those were fires, 24 medical emergencies, three hazardous condition incidents, 21 service calls, 38 good intent, 23 false alarms. There were two incidents in Paxton Borough, and the total personnel.
alarms. There were two incidents in Paxton Borough, and the total personnel active responders is fifty-eight. It's a couple-page report. I'm not going to go through the rest of it, but it'll be posted in the lobby, and we can get this online.
All right.
And I, unless someone's here, I don't know if we have EMS. I'm mostly looking at the podium, so I can't see.
Yeah.
Okay. So we could double up that report next time.
All right. We're going to move on to the Police Department and Community Services report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to present the Police Department report for the month of May 2025. We had one thousand, three hundred and fifty-five calls for service at the township, and sixty-seven in Paxton Borough, for a total of one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two calls. As far as the Part One, Part Two crime totals, we had one, it says murder. It was actually an attempted homicide charge, but it kicks out as a murder. That victim did survive, and we did make an arrest in that case already, so that's closed out. We had two robberies, thirty-nine assaults, five burglaries, and fifty-eight larcenies, for a total of a hundred and five Part One crimes. The Part Two crimes, the totals were two forgeries, nineteen for fraud, two embezzlement cases, two stolen property, thirteen vandalism, one weapons offense, nine drug offenses, three family offenses, six DUIs, five public drunkenness, nine disorderly conducts, and twenty-six that fit in the category of all other offenses, for a total of ninety-seven Part Two crimes. On page two, our monthly statistics, we had a, bless you, we had a total of eighty-one arrests, five for DUI. There were eighty-seven traffic citations written and a hundred and thirty-three traffic warnings. Twenty-five non-traffic citations were written, as well as sixteen parking violations. There were sixteen foot patrols and six school foot patrols. In the next section, our crime and call trends, I can see there in May, our Part One crimes were up to a hundred and five. The Part Two crimes dropped to ninety-seven, and we had more calls for service last month than in the previous month. But year-to-date, twenty-five, all of our numbers are down as compared to 2024. And this next section is something new, so try this out tonight and see if you like it. We have a new community services chart that's in front of you. It lists some of the things we talk about every month, and it gives you like a three-month snapshot of where we're at for the year. So in that first row, that says events and presentations, we had six of those in March, ten in April, and nine last month, which brings us to a total of twenty-nine community service events and presentations for the year. Last month, we had two enforcement programs that got started. Those are things like specific DUI enforcement details, like we had Operation Nighthawk last month, or if we have a click at our ticket detail, aggressive driver details, those types of things. The drug drop box, we didn't have a weight reported for May, but to date this year, we have collected two hundred and eighty-three point four seven pounds of unused or expired medications. And we had one mix-up inspection in May, which brings us up to a total for the year of forty mix-up inspections. On the last page, there's a highlighted event out of our community services report, and there were several events that took place last month. Couple Memorial Day service events, a couple May fair events, there was a chili cook-off at the Lawton Legion. And the one that I highlighted for this report comes from May 21st, where Corporal Lex participated in the annual Ride of Silence in Harrisburg City. This serves as a memorial service to those who lost their lives in Pennsylvania while riding on a bicycle. Corporal Lex rode his department-issued bicycle with dozens of participants and assisted Harrisburg City Police with traffic. And then our upcoming events, our youth police program is about to kick off. We've received a record number of applications this year. Our class size is at full capacity with twenty-two kids, which is crazy. I don't think we've ever had that many kids for the youth police program. That will run from June 23rd through June 27th, from eight in the morning until noon. The program focuses on educating our youth about various topics of policing, to include patrol operations, canine, police forensics, DUI and traffic enforcement, firearm safety, and the police use of force. And Coffee with a Cup is next week, on June 18th, from 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM. We're doing an evening version, to try to get the folks that are working all day a chance to come out in the evening and spend some time with us. And this month, it will be at the Swedera Restaurant, which is located at 5610 Derry Street. The complete breakdown of our calls for service, as usual, can be found on the following pages. This report, the full community services report, and all of our list of calls for service will be posted in the lobby and on the website for anyone who's interested.
Thank you.
And I can take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Almost forgot, I'm the one that's supposed to say something. We're up to our Public Works and Recreation Report.
Good evening, Commissioners again. It's always tough to follow Superintendent Stoffer's reports. Mine just seems so inadequate after listening to all that. I'll quickly go over the month, May monthly Public Works reports. Again, our staff continues to do our normal spring maintenance, which includes roadside mowing, brush pickup, and street sweeping. The May activities, we continue to work at the compost facility, grinding the woody waste, and continuing our efforts to turn last year's leaves into compost. Public Works does the normal routine road maintenance, which includes potholes, sign repair, clean inlet tops, roadside mowing as time permits. And as always, our street sweepers are on the road as weather allows. Parks and Recs report, just like the Public Works, you know, they continue the mowing of the parks, trash, and different tasks, cleaning the bathrooms as well, and of course, the Parks and Rec staff has spent a lot of time on the continuing of the field preparation for the current softball and baseball season. So that's my May monthly report for Public Works.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments at this time?
I just want to, in case people came in since last meeting, with the ten inches of rain we had in May, it's tough to do a lot of the Public Works, get out and mow. The grass is growing faster than you can really keep up with. But I also touched on, it doesn't take much with that amount of rain to have roadway flooding, street flooding.
Sure.
Some of our smaller tributaries will tend to leave the banks, and that's just ad's work, you know, for our guys. And I know they've been doing a tremendous job, so certainly appreciate it. And in addition to that, our Public Works do a tremendous service to the community when they're involved in community events. So whether it's under the heading of recreation, or police, or things like that, Public Works always plays a role. And I'll probably talk more about this in my comments, but they did an absolutely awesome job with the outdoor movie that we had. I think I've attended most, if not all, the outdoor movies, and I was shocked with the crowd that was there, well over an hour before the movie. And our guys had everything set up. I was running back and forth, and when I was there, there were a few people. I came back to the building to get some drinks. And when I went back, the parking lot was full. Our guys were not in a panic. But it's not just the setup and emptying the trash and opening the bathrooms, the public workshops. They went out in the crowd, handed out popcorn, treat bags, drinks. Just do an incredible service for our public, pointing out where the bathrooms were, making sure the bathrooms were up and running, and being there from the beginning to the end. I think they did not leave there till ten minutes to eleven, maybe even eleven o'clock. And I know the family, the company that set up the projector and the big screen was so happy. I don't know that they were expecting our guys to completely tear down. But please thank the three that we had there. They did an absolutely incredible job.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else?
Nope.
All right. We're up to item twelve, approval of the Chambers Point Park site plan and cost estimate. I'm going to go ahead and...
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Vice President Steele for...
Just so the public knows, it is a park being built off of Anthony Drive. The total cost estimate was three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. It involves a basketball court fence, a pavilion, a concrete pad for toilets, several benches, and obviously a paved entrance, and then somewhat of a, I guess, would that be an ADA ramp to get into there? Plus some preliminary other things that might have to be done as far as with the rain garden. I think this is a good moving forward of a public and private partnership, because those individuals that live in that neighborhood, when they close on their houses, they gave some considerable amount of money to build the park. The developer actually set out a plot of land for this to take place. And I guess we'll entertain any questions or comments to this.
I just have a...
Oh, I forgot one thing. This work will be performed by our Public Works guys.
I have a couple of questions. So is this township-owned property?
This park is not township-owned property. The piece of land there, what it is, is a lease that you will see from McNaughton, and the HOA from that community was involved in this project. And when the lease is done, correct me if I'm wrong on everything, Zach, because I think you worked out the details. Once the lease is done, it'll be turned over to the HOA, and then the HOA will then turn it over to the park. But the lease gives the public easement and access for it to be a public park.
Okay, so who's responsible for the maintenance of the park?
Our folks are.
Are we also responsible for any liability of the park?
I would think. It's no different than any other one of our parks.
Okay. So just my final question. I'm not, have we done this before? Is there any other, I'm not familiar with this lease of, can you explain to me how the lease works?
Yeah, it was based upon a subdivision of the property and having to go back and amend, what was it, the HOA documents, I think it might have been, or something to that nature. So the way to get the park was to lease, because it's technically set aside by the developer, and then after that's done, it'll be handed over to the HOA, and then from that, the HOA will then turn the property over to the township.
Yes, the township previously approved this area as open space recreational area.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the development plan, and I don't really see any place on the original development plan that provides for any open space recreational. I see a location that provided for like stormwater discharge and things like that, but it wasn't necessarily set up to be a park. So, but in any case, thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't know if this will be helpful, but we have Ivy Ridge, which was a homeowners association.
Barard.
Same thing.
Yeah, and...
And so that was a similar lease?
Barard is the most recent.
Okay.
That was within the time that I was on the board.
It went from their ownership to township ownership, and it was not, I don't know if everybody remembers this, but it wasn't necessarily ready to be a park. So it held up for a couple of years, and it needed topside. Basically, they left an area that probably was the least desirable for them to build on. And through working with the township and that homeowners association, we ended up with actually a really good park that we're going to be improving. And this one here, I think, is a similar set aside for development. And if I'm correct about this, I think there's future development, like that project's not done, and will that cross after the building's done in Swedera? Do you know, Mr. Steele, if that even goes into the boroughs of Swedera? I know it's close.
It does. There's a second project that is essentially the backbone of Chambers Hill that involves the rest of the build-out of the community.
And I think we had a similar thing in Rutherford. I can't think of what we called...
Barard.
Barard Park and then the bike ground.
Yeah, that was in 2020 or 2021.
Yeah, so, you know, it kind of moves in stages. And the one distinction between this and the other ones is the park is coming in before all the homes are done, which benefits the people that are there now, because a lot of these things come in phases. And that's always been one of the issues with the township, that the park is the last thing, or the open space is the last thing to do. So I think we have had, it's relatively new to me, because I'm used to the public parks in the neighborhoods, and I don't know the history of it. But I would say in the last, you know, so many years, it seems like most of these parks kind of come in with the same thing. And I agree with you. I went out there and looked at it. It was just stormwater retention and piping and things like that for the neighborhood. And I did not know initially that that was the designated area, but it has on-street parking.
I mean, it's that I could see from the original plan. I don't think it was. And it's okay if plans had changed in the last year, couple of years or so. But my, the one thing I do recall is there's other parks. I distinctly remember that there were, there was a plan for a park in those areas as part of their land development plan. Like I said, I pulled an original land development plan and did not see the designation other than that set aside for stormwater. I'll go back and review it again, but I think you satisfied my questions this evening, so thank you. Oh, actually, yeah, one more question. So the total amount that the township is paying is, is that three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine?
And twenty-five cents.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or discussion?
I think the best thing about this location is it's perfect, because there's an existing stormwater basin there. So we're working with Dawood HRG to see if all the stormwater requirements will be met by this basin, which we think it will be fine and have plenty of excess. So it'll save us tens of thousands of dollars on doing rain gardens and other things. So put that out there.
Thank you. All right. Since I'm not hearing any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We're up to item thirteen. There is no information in the packets for anybody. I didn't get any documents with regard to this. So I think at this point, we'll just briefly give an overview, and then I'll make a motion to table it to the first meeting of next month, and then we'll have the supporting documents.
I'll second the motion to table.
Okay, and then go ahead and discuss.
For discussion. There was a little confusion here through the process that started last year. We were looking at the Enhaunt Park, which I believe is known as, the upper part is known as Kosivar Park. I believe there's a monument there, so Kosivar Park. And the original plan was to submit the changes there for the gaming grant. So I know Mr. Trafka and, you know, the Vice President President, as far as recreation, we kind of overlapped. My role was more the Chair of the Finance. And what ended up happening is, after we came up with the grant and the changes there, we switched to Ivy Ridge as our gaming grant request. And I think there was some confusion on which park we're going to talk about. So we don't have anything on Enhaunt, but to follow that up, we switched to two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of improvements to Ivy Ridge, which includes a build-out of the concession on the utility building, a stage that is a permanent structure that stays there, some additional parking down by the tot lot, two play pieces, which we think at this point will just be swings. If you're familiar with that park, it has a play piece that connects and has slides, but it's one central thing, some benches around it. We were going to add swings. And Kevin, if I get this wrong, just going off my memory here, we're... we're gonna try to do a biking trail connection, mountain bike trail connection to the Samba and Greenbelt Trails over the hill. We also are putting in access gates where right now there's wire and bollards so that we can utilize for special events, the parking on the massive field that is there. And I don't know if I said it's two sand volleyball and a cricket pitch. And I think though, so we switched from Enhaunt to that. It was $218,000. We submitted to the county. Normally here, a maximum threshold is $150,000. Dauphin County and the Gaming Board awarded us the full $218,000 for those upgrades. So what we had at Enhaunt prior to that was in the footprint that was there, some work on a retaining wall, I think that we had already fixed, where there's existing tennis court that has some type of leveling issue. Whether it's a sinkhole or not, we don't know because it's covered with concrete, but it's definitely sagging underneath. Something's wrong there. That area was gonna be repurposed for, I believe, four pickleball courts. And then the other half is going to be playground play area with the painted bases, hopscotch, foursquare, those types of things. So we're not changing the footprint. Someone was nice enough to run a vehicle into the pavilion there. So we don't think we can make repairs. We're probably, we're gonna upgrade new pavilion. I believe that's also slated for a play piece, all within the framework of the park. And there's an area that is fenced on two sides, that would be fenced on all four sides. It would be a small dog run or dog park and some benches. So the reason that this was working towards the agenda tonight, we already had a cost estimate on those things, and we had some leftover funds from other projects. I don't know what the project, either Re-Light Go or some, so we don't know what the cost of the township is, so we'll come back on that. But I think the reason it entered into this had to do with permitting. It's our park, and we had a discussion, do we need to do anything as far as any type of permits, stormwater, anything like that?
For zoning, no.
Okay.
Building permits, we'll have to give building permits for the pavilion. And stormwater permits, if there's new impervious over 1,000, but I'd have to review everything.
And I don't think we're paving anything new. It's just existing.
Oh, then no stormwater permits.
And I'm fine with tabling that, coming back. You know, I had reached out later in the day, yesterday was getting to agenda time, and I didn't know if we were gonna get documents from Dawood. But we do have, because I know you gave estimates from the highway and some playground pieces. So we can just come back next month, and I don't know that we were gonna get started any sooner than that, so I'm fine with that. And I apologize for not having the cost estimate tonight for that project. But just for the public, the original grant request was $150,000, and it was going down from there. There was some money available and some things that the highway would save. I don't want to say exactly what it is until we match the money available. But just so you have a framework of a starting point, the high point of these improvements for that park was 150, and we feel we have some matching funds, and then our people can save us some money there.
And then, just for the public too, with regard to what Commissioner Connolly was saying about Ivy Ridge, we just got the notification today from the county that the full $218,000 was awarded. The letter stated from May. And the switching basically gave us more money to do more improvements at a different park, and now we have the one that would have been the lower cost that will be tax money, so. And potentially not tax money too. So some of it will most likely come from there, but like you said, we have additional funds that can be applied towards it. Does anyone have any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to table the approval of Enhaunt Park and cost estimates until the first meeting in July. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're up to 14 visitors' requests and comments. Same thing, come forward, state your name and address, and write it down so that we can keep it for record-keeping, and you may begin.
I know Kevin's gonna give me the look. I'll make it short, I promise. I'm tired tonight, so trust me. It will be quick. Typically, I don't come up and share comments, but I just wanted to share something that I had heard today about one of our law enforcement officers. I think we have a lot of amazing people here on staff, both between our fire department, and I'm sure next month Chief Eversen will share. We spent a lot of hours out on 283 last night. We had a tanker truck rollover with 7,500 gallons of diesel fuel onboard. It lost about 4,000 of those on the interstate. And pulling up early into that incident, it was a mess. But we all worked together between all the local entities. PSP was amazing to work with last night. Our local law enforcement showed up from the township here. And they're always a great partner. But we always get accustomed to working with one another locally and being around here and just the amazing things that we do together. But Scott Neal shared a story with me today. He had no idea I was gonna say this, and Scott, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. But, you know, we get put into situations in our life, we never know what it's gonna be. This man was on vacation with his family, and he saved a life. Somebody choked. He knew what to do. He jumped into action, and he saved that person's life by giving them the homelik maneuver and projecting an object that was stuck in that person's throat. And I think he deserves a lot of credit. I've known Scott a long time, and it's really an honor to get to know, you know, all of our police department. And Mick, you know, congratulations to Mick Snyder for his accomplishment tonight. But, you know, we do tend to hear a lot of negative about law enforcement, you know, in the communities. But we don't hear that here. And I just wanted to give our guys just a little bit of credit tonight. And especially to you, Scott. You did something that you probably didn't realize by you telling me that story today. It was just in passing. But that hit a spot with me, and, you know, we work together a lot. And a lot of times, the interactions that we have with people are not as positive as what that is. You know, we don't always save a life when we go out to help EMS or to provide CPR to someone's family and to do life-saving measures, but you did. And I think, again, kudos to you, and I'm honored to be a friend of yours and a colleague of yours here within the township. So just wanted to share those words. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't tell him the other part.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? All right, we'll move on to item 15, possible stormwater violations for investigation. I don't see anybody jumping up. We're up to item 16, Commissioners are in requests, Commissioners requesting comments, additional business and correspondence. Commissioner Tuckey?
Yeah. Well, first, congratulations again to Mick Snyder. I appreciate everything our police do for us on a daily basis and our emergency services. Something was stated earlier tonight. Is it true that the engine is now being stored out at the compost facility?
I don't know.
I don't know anything about it.
I don't have the answer to that.
Commissioner Connolly?
I heard it tonight, probably same time. I...
That's the first time I heard it too.
You're not aware of that being stored there?
I'm not.
Okay. I'd like to know if it is being stored there? Because it should be sitting up at Chambers Hill Fire Company. They are working to get back together again. They definitely have people that are taking the classes and doing what they need to do to keep serving the community. And that needs, it definitely needs to happen. They've been in service for over 70 years. And I'd like to see if it is true that it's being stored at the compost facility, that it gets put back up in station so they can keep trying to build that fire station. And I would suggest letting them build it, letting them put it back together without having any interruption because they are in the process of rebuilding. I just also want to say, just if everyone could just please pay a little bit more attention when you're driving because not everyone else is, of course. There's a lot more drivers in our community that aren't paying attention and that are driving faster than they should be. I almost had a close call. And fortunately, it didn't happen the way it was, looked like it was gonna happen with, this time of year, you have a lot more motorcycles on the road. And I'm just asking everyone to please, watching on stream and everywhere else in this room, please take that extra second or two before you proceed to go forward. And because fortunately, I missed someone from just a second or two. The person came out of nowhere. It wasn't because I wasn't paying attention, but they didn't stop, apparently at the stop sign, came around the corner where I was coming out of. There's no real distance there. And I'm just fortunate that that person did not hit my vehicle because if they did, they would have been gone. So I'm just asking everyone, just please try to pay a little bit more attention while you're driving. Not that you aren't, but it doesn't take much to unfortunately have something happen that's tragic. But I would like to get that information about the fire engine. And I'm requesting if that is true, it gets put back up at Chambers Hill Fire Company. Thank you. Everyone, I hope you have a nice evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Zubek?
Yes, I'd like to just, I tried to port up on my phone, and there's very, very little reception down here, so. But there is gonna be a Flag Day presentation, I believe, at the 48th on Saturday. Commissioner Tuckey, is that correct? Do you remember the time?
I will look at it.
Yeah, I think 12 to 6, 12 to 6. So I'm looking forward to turning out for that. They've been doing a lot of really nice events there as well, so. Look to see some people there. Also, I just wanted to reiterate Commissioner Tuckey's comments on the speeding. I've been saying it every week that I've been up here. It is really concerning, especially, I've seen it on Chambers Hill Road. There's no reason for someone to cross over the yellow line and pass somebody on Chambers Hill Road. 80th Street is still a problem. You know, there's just not a lot of people that really, and they may not even be from our own area. You know, a lot of it might be, you know, traffic passing through, but they're really not cognizant of our residents and the children. And I've had some concerns that I brought to Superintendent Stouffer's attention that I'd like to have looked at, and Rutherford especially. You know, really just trying to bring awareness to what's going on township-wide so that we can address some of these issues. And then that kind of brings me into my segue. On June 5th, we had, was the implementation of the distracted driving law in Pennsylvania. I think it's something that's needed, that is designed to save lives. In my regular job, I'm proud to have participated in that process with the prime sponsor, my Senator Rosemary Brown. She worked very, very hard on this legislation for 12 years along with Eileen Miller, who tragically lost her son to a distracted driver. And so, and it's called Greg Miller's Law. But I do want to just reiterate that if you're at a stoplight, if you're on the road, you got your hand on the phone, any part of your body, you know, you're not, you don't have your hands on the wheel, eyes on the road, and you're not focused, then you're not, you know, you're not really keeping everybody else safe as well as yourself on the road. So just want to remind everybody to keep your hands on the wheel, your eyes on the road, and focus. And, you know, nothing is more important than getting there in safe and proper manner. So thank you, and I hope everyone has a safe drive home this evening. And, you know, a wonderful night with your families. We'll get out of here hopefully a little bit earlier than normal, so thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, I want to start with a couple of activities coming up next week. On Wednesday, June 18th, we will be having a pop-up community cookout at the intersection of Conestoga and Bailey Street. This is on our border with Steelton, but the basketball court there is within Swatara Township's boundaries. We were part of a revitalization effort there in the past, and we've had a couple of events there. I want to say that the young gentleman who brought it on the township's radar to revitalize that and fix it up lived on Conestoga Street. And his name is Kenton Alston. I don't know if anybody knows Kenton Alston, but he was just named the head basketball coach for Central Penn College. He's a former Steel High roller who has won a state championship, and I believe he has held, I don't know about currently, one of the scoring records and rebounding records at Penn State Harrisburg. Absolutely fine young man. I reached out to him, and he's planning on attending our community cookout. It's from 6:30 to 7:30. We'll have, obviously, first responders, police and firefighters. And I want to thank Joe Cannoli from the Rutherford Station. They'll be bringing their trailer to cook. And we don't really have too many young people, but I was told there will be freeze pops or ice cream for everybody, but I think the kids are gonna be excited about that. So that's on Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30. Don't fill up on hamburgers and hot dogs there because from 7:00 to 9:00, as we heard from Chief Stouffer, that that's our, and I do have the right day, right? That's our coffee with the cop down the street, down Dairy Street at the Swatara Restaurant. We had a previous coffee with the cop there. The place is the same location under new ownership, and the previous owner was a fine gentleman. And the new owner also is very committed to the community. And I'm sure the coffee with the cop will be nice. I'm gonna run from one to the other because I don't like to miss events. And then the next day, June 19th, which is Juneteenth, we'll get this on the Facebook and the website. We're working with Barbara Barksdale, the cemetery lady from Midland Cemetery, historic African-American cemetery here in Swatara Township. For now, the plan is for self-guided tours with literature and a map provided by Midland or Friends of Midland. But she's working, now it's around her birthday and she's traveling, but she's working to have people from Friends of Midland there to offer a guided tour. And we should have an answer on that tomorrow by the time we post it. And that's gonna start in the morning. You can go basically anytime. But if you go there and you're looking for lunch, not far from there on Moon Street, we'll be doing a pop-up barbecue in front of the Hoy and Latchaw Towers. Everyone's welcome. We picked that location because we have a good bit of residents that will come out of those buildings and take advantage of it. Don't know all the details as far as who's manning the grill, but Chief Stouffer has excelled at that function in the past. So I'm sure he'll take part of that. In addition to that, looks like Crossroads Christian Ministry is starting their youth outreach program this week. And they're going to be supplying us with six to 12 high school students that do community outreach and work so they can help set up and tear down the tables. And at the same time, they'll be doing litter cleanups. And because of the rain, and they saw what was going on, they're talking about, and we'll work with them on this, clearing storm drains. this, clearing storm drains. Unfortunately, what has happened is a good thing that turned into a bad thing. PennDOT contracts with people that go along in the right of way and cut the weeds. You probably noticed this on roads, about four feet in from the shoulder of the road, the grass will be cut. And in some places, it was cut for the first time this year, which left about 12 to 18-inch pieces of grass laying on the road, which was fine when they mowed it. That grass was primarily responsible for blocking most of the drains in the township. We had crews go through to get rid of litter, but then the grass flowed down to storm drains and then caused in many places roadway flooding until we could clear the drains. So we're happy that the grass was cut, not so happy that the drains were clogged. And while I'm on the drains, I'll go right to Public Works. Our guys do a great job. It doesn't take much for somebody to go through or blow grass in the street or, you know, everything's great on Monday, and then on Tuesday, we have a problem. But I do want to thank the crews that were out mowing. I saw they were up here in Bishop Park. That's looking good. And for all the activities with the fuel spill, the events, going back to even the Torted Belt, which I mentioned before, our fire police are out doing an incredible job. The police always do a great job to the point where it makes me proud when I'm out and about at these activities to see our police, but have people compliment them all the time. And I know the admin staff gets roped in to helping with events, dealing with issues, putting out fires. And I want to touch on our firefighters. I didn't make it to the burn this year, but they had their burn training, and it looked like from a picture that I saw, there were at least 22 firefighters, Swatara Township firefighters, at this burn. And it was a long day there. Four of them showed up for the movie night after going to the burn and staying there for hours, providing lighting, and, you know, meeting and greeting with the citizens of the township. And I want to also say 22 in the youth academy, like the chief said, all-time high. Absolutely incredible program. You know, we were concerned a few years ago of maybe numbers dwindling, so it's an excellent program, and 22 is a great number. And I want to finish on one thing that the meeting kind of started with. The Dauphin Highlands Golf Course is owned by a general authority connected to Dauphin County. Swatara Township is not selling the property, really has nothing to do with the sale of the property. And that property, 228 acres, had been zoned mixed use for many years. I want to say maybe 2010 or before. So this board took no action of changing the zoning. We did allow data centers as a permitted use in that zoning, and then put some guidelines and regulations on that use. Prior to us doing that, there were no guidelines, no regulations on a data center anywhere in the township. So if I heard the comments, the vote this board took was to place some protections for our residents related to a use in a zone. There has never been a vote of this board for a data center or against a data center. So I'll end with saying this. I'm amazed with the positive things I hear when I'm out in the community. Well over 100 people. We know we had 80-plus children because of the amount of bags we gave out at the first movie night, and people were happy with the township's setup, teardown. All they had to do was come and watch a movie, and we got incredible thanks. And then people were asking more Commissioner Steele than myself because I had some family members, I was talking, I could overhear people asking, "When are you doing this again? This is great." So we're going to make sure we really promote the activities, get them on Facebook, try to include as many people in the positive things that are going on in the township. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Steele?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody that came out and enjoyed the night with us, those that logged on. There's a couple of things I'd like to touch on, but I want to glean on a topic that Chief Worth had came to the podium and discussed, and that is our public servants and emergency service in Swatara Township. We have some of the best police officers and firefighters in central Pennsylvania. And it's disheartening, I'm not a Facebooker, but it's disheartening the amount of messages that constituents and my neighbors and family members are sending where there's a fire service in Swatara Township and those that serve being tore down, tore apart. Some of you that want to be on Facebook, you like the chaos, where we want some calmness. You want to tear down? We're in the building up. You want to create animosity? You know what? We want togetherness. And it seems sometimes that you have nothing better to do than to just get on Facebook instead of addressing the problems head-on. And out of all the Facebook posts that I've seen that was sent to me about our firefighters, you identify some problems, but you identify no solutions. We might say the same thing, and we might want the same thing, so why don't we meet at the table and have an actual discussion? We can scream, we can disagree, we can get on Facebook, we can get on Twitter and say what the problems are, but when are you going to offer some solutions? Because there are 37,000 residents in Swatara Township. It's not the firefighters that have failed us. You know who's failed us? The elected officials. You know why they failed you? Because it is 2025, and if you pick up the phone right now in Swatara Township and dial 911, you're not guaranteed a response from a fire truck. And that's the realness of it. If one of your family members are in an accident and they're entrapped, or one of your family members are in a house and they're trapped in Swatara Township, you're not guaranteed a response. 37,000 residents are not guaranteed a response, and some seem perplexed in the crowd. Just because you have volunteers does not mean you're guaranteed a response. It does not. Our volunteers have lives. They have families. When the 4th of July comes, guess what they're going to do? They're going to be with their families. But being disingenuous to them shows that you don't know what volunteers do. So I'm going to explain a little bit what they do do. They could be at a dinner right now at Gilligan's. If their pager goes off, they might be with their cousin, their grandmom, and it might be grandmom's 85th birthday. You know what that volunteer is going to do? They're going to leave that party at Gilligan's right now and respond to that call for you because you called for them. In the middle of the night, they might got to be to work at 6 o'clock in the morning, and the pager goes off at 3:30 in the morning. And they're tired because they just got to sleep at 12:00 AM. You know what they're going to do? They're going to run down the steps, get in their vehicle, and respond to the call. Tired as hell the next day when they go to work. That's what volunteers do. So for you to get on Facebook or Twitter or any social media platform and tear these individuals down because you have no solutions, because you don't, you disagree the way things are, be part of the solution because all you're doing is creating more problems. And the more problems that you create, the more you tear down a volunteer, they're not going to want to be around. And then that leaves a worse situation than we're in already. The Boy Scouts of America, your church, no matter where there's a volunteer, we all agree that we're hurting for volunteers. The fire service isn't immune to that. It hasn't been immune to that for 30 years. This is nothing new. What you should be lobbying for is a guaranteed service, and how do you provide that guaranteed service? To say Swatara Township doesn't care about volunteers, there's nowhere else that you can get a stipend like Swatara Township offers. Every volunteer gets a stipend. Every volunteer has a free gym membership pass. Every volunteer has a life insurance policy on them. These are all free things, free of charge, by the way. They have a free gym membership, and the list goes on and on. If they want a physical, the physical's free, where it can catch early cancer. So where are we hurting our volunteers? We're hurting our volunteers when we decide to get on Facebook or Twitter or any social media platform and tear them down. And I've witnessed some of our volunteers now. They're now speaking back because they've had enough. They've had enough, and I don't blame them because they're tired of being tore down. As far as the Chambers Hill situation, Mary, the only thing I can say to you is this. You know we have volunteers, you know we have part-timers. Where I become perplexed, if there was some meeting that you speak of where the fire board and the chair of public safety said that this township would seek an agreement and go to all the commissioners for a lease of 40% of that building, I live in Chambers Hill, why would we say no if we wanted fire protection? It's a lease. It's no different than a rental agreement if you own a piece of rental property. That's smart. Why should taxpayers continue to pay for things that they'll never own? I don't, I can't fathom that. I don't understand that. People come to a podium all across this country, and all they talk about is wasteful taxpayers' money. I don't think 40% and us paying a lease is a waste of taxpayer money because I think in the end, a fire truck could have got put there. I think part-timers could have got put there. And then as you rebuild, then here comes your volunteers. But I'm perplexed at a board or a company, and maybe I don't know enough yet about what all transpired, but 40% of your building leased to this township to put an adequate fire service there, whether it be volunteers or part-timers, and to say no, I think it's counterintuitive to the message that's been told up here by the Chambers Hill Fire Company. And if the township is willing to help, I say we take their help. It's no secret that, you know what, we do need volunteers to help at fundraisers. Volunteers at fundraisers help the community. I think the volunteerism of a volunteer fire company saves lives without running on a fire truck, if you understand what I'm saying. There are some people that are under privilege. They get an opportunity to come work at your station or in other stations all across the Dauphin County to volunteer. It's an outlet for a troubled kid to stay out of trouble. That might be the only meal they get. So I get the other side because I was that kid. I was that poor kid. That sometimes that meal at that fire company, that's the only meal that I ate. So I understand that side too, Mary. But at some point, this board, the Fire and Service Rescue Board in Chambers Hill, has to work out a solution. And if it's your members that are tearing down the volunteer fire service, I don't know if they are. I've only seen certain posts. Just ask them to stop while we work through a solution. That's all. We will get there. I believe we will, and it's just going to take time. I want to talk about the incident that happened on 283 yesterday. I didn't get to make it. I was tied up. I think Chief Worth spoke to something where, again, there's volunteer firefighters, a tanker truck overturns. That's a hazardous material incident. You're talking thousands of gallons of diesel fuel. You got a response from Swatara Fire and Rescues, surrounding municipalities, the Dauphin County Hazmat Team, I'm sure DEP, the county's activated, our EMAs activated. If you get a chance, go out back and look at our EMA Center. And I'm not taking nothing from our volunteers, but that's not adequate. That's not adequate if something happens and we got to put our police department, our fire department, and our EMS people in the building, and we genuinely have to run an incident command situation here. That's not adequate for the 37,000 residents here. Not speaking for, during the day, we might be anywhere in upsize of 100,000-plus people because of people that work here. So we got to put the emotions aside and genuinely think about the safety and care of the individuals here. But from what I heard and the pictures that I've seen, everyone did an outstanding job. So kudos to those folks. I want to talk a little bit about the parks because meeting after meeting, sometimes I even get remiss by stating some of the good things that we're doing and the things that are taking place. So so far this year, you've heard the pre-bid meeting of Bishop Park. Bishop Park's in a bidding phase. I believe, Kevin, by next month, I'd say, we should be voting as a board to approve that with a park complete at Bishop Park finally by April of next year. You just heard Chambers Point Park, Ivy Ridge following behind, Anhot Park, Donald Taylor Park. These are projects that's getting done for you, the community. Dewey Street Road Project. Go take a walk down Dewey Street. Dewey Street's actually falling off into the woods. It's well overdue. That should have been taken care of. The Highland Street Drainage Project, anybody that lives in what they call the OBE, you know what I'm talking about, the Oberlin-Hotbresser, it's always flooded by that school. It's probably been flooding there for 50-plus years. That project's getting done. The Highland, the Oberlin Street Connectivity Project, where you now have the ADA Ramp Compliance to get up on the sidewalks, that project's done. Go out 441 in the crossroads, a traffic light. These are just some of the infrastructure projects that are getting done. So this local government, which actually directly impacts your life locally. Again, people can get on Facebook, people can say things from here of what's not being hap, what's not happening. I implore you to look at the minutes and actually see the reality by driving around your community and see what's actually happening. And with that, I'll say have a good night, drive safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Zubek's comments reminded me that at the beginning of this meeting, I was supposed to announce that we are in the basement, and we may have some technical difficulties with the live streaming of this meeting. So since I forgot to say it then, I'm saying it now. Hopefully, it's worked on Facebook and people have been able to get to this point. But the reason that we're in the basement is because we have construction going on upstairs where we have renovations going on in this building that are much needed. And following the renovation, then we'll have installation of the audiovisual equipment, and hopefully, at that point, any issues that we have with Wi-Fi and all of these systems, microphones, all of that will be in the past once that's completed. So the, I only have two other things. I just wanted to say congratulations again to Corporal Snyder on his promotion. And I want to thank everyone that came out to the movie night on Saturday. Typically, or historically, we've had that movie night Father's Day weekend, the Saturday before Father's Day weekend. It was my idea to move it up, and typically, I'm away on vacation Father's Day weekend, so I always miss the first one. Well, I miss this one too. A family member had a wedding, so I still haven't gotten to get to one of these first movie nights, but we do have another one coming up at the end of summer, like a back-to-school movie night. So we had an end-of-school movie night, and then we'll have one September 6th, which is, seems like a long way away at this point, but that'll be here before we know it. And I want to thank all of the township staff that set up and tore down for the event, as well as the firefighters and fire police that attended. So that's all I have for this evening. And everyone that's here, thank you for being here this evening. And I hope you get home safe, and hopefully, people are able to watch this, and thank you for doing so. And I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment at this time. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion, or meeting is adjourned at 8:51 PM.